It's 6:30 now. Is that 5:30? Yeah, 5:30. I'd like to call this Housing Subcommittee to... I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Chairman Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Gitcher.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. This is the Housing Subcommittee. It's a refer by the entire body to discuss in the Housing Subcommittee on the tax title, vacant properties, and the city plan disposition of those properties. So I'd like to also acknowledge Counselor Rita Mercier, who present here, also from the Law Department. I'd like to recognize Corey Williams, Solicitor, and John... Right. So let's... Why don't you introduce the staff from the Law Department, please?
Thank you. So to my right is First Assistant City Solicitor John McKenna, Tax Title Paralegal Stephanie Hunter, and Assistant City Solicitor Tim French.
Okay. Thank you. Let me turn over to my colleague Counsel Gitcher. He has some comment to make. Thank you.
To you, Mr. Chairman, to the City Solicitor. We've asked in the past that we get these things earlier than now, so it would be easier for us to have a proper discussion back and forth when you have 502 accounts and all these things. Is there a way that your team can actually go over this packet and just explain to us the highlights of this packet and what our next moves, our intentions of the packet are?
Thank you. Mr. Solicitors.
Sure. Thank you. So where it was sort of a general topic on the agenda, I thought it might be helpful to sort of pass this along ahead of time, not knowing any particular questions that might come up. But with the packet itself, as Counsel Gitcher mentioned, there's, you know, 502 accounts that are in tax title right now. And I wanted to highlight that as of January 1st to present in 2024, we have collected approximately $550,000 with principal and interest through tax title. This is something that we're finally able to do through staffing and resources to be a little more aggressive and active in how we pursue a lot of these properties. We sent out letters, impending legal action letters, in February, March, and April. So this is a way to be a little more proactive in the process. So for those individuals who are behind in their taxes, we can get these letters out. And we've found that the more and more we stay on top of it, the more and more residents are starting to respond, and they're starting to try to create a way to get caught up in their taxes. This is not something that we have done in the past. This is relatively new with our new team. And we're only a few months in, but so far, it has... It's borne fruit, and it's shown to be a good process so far. And I also want to point out under... I sort of put it as small balance account, so there are 128 accounts that owe less than $1,000 in arrears. I mention that because the cost to the city for filing with the land court is $760. So in terms of efficiency, it makes more sense to reach out to these accounts and say, "Look, you owe us whatever the dollar amount is." Oftentimes, they'll just pay that in full, or they might enter into some form of repayment agreement. And sort of to piggyback off of that, I had mentioned that there's a state statute, Chapter 60, Section 62A, and that specifically addresses tax title repayment agreements. And cities, you know, municipalities, they're allowed to, by bylaw or for the city in ordinance, sort of allow for a little more flexible terms when it comes to that repayment, because no matter what, the 25% has to be made in order to get in any type of repayment plan. The account, the resident, they have to pay that 25%. And if someone has owed taxes for a while, the interest that accrues, that number could be somewhat substantial. So in this scenario, we could adopt an ordinance that would allow the city to waive upwards of 50% of the interest. And, you know, I think that it's worth exploring. You know, there could be an opportunity there for... That dollar amount might make the difference, and that might allow residents to actually enter into a good faith repayment agreement. I also, just very briefly, I touched on the recent constitutional questions that have come up with, you know, tax takings. There was the Supreme Court case.
Right.
Tyler v. Hennepin, that came out last year at the Supreme Court. It was a case out in Minnesota, where things are done differently there than they are here. But to sort of summarize, there was no right of redemption in Minnesota. If the municipality were to take your property by tax title, it was theirs. Didn't matter how much... How little or how much you owed, the entire thing was theirs. That was found to be unconstitutional.
Right.
Now, in Massachusetts, there is a right of redemption. Now, I do also note that last month, out in Hampden Superior Courts, out in Springfield area, it was found that this process that municipalities are allowed to use was unconstitutional. I suspect that will probably be appealed and will go up to the SJC at some point. But in terms of Middlesex County and the case law and the laws that we operate under, that doesn't affect us yet. That could change. I can't say for certain, but I suspect that it might. But for now, that doesn't affect how we go about our tax title takings. And then just a last couple of points. For the cases that we currently have in land court, and once you have more time to adequately go through the Excel spreadsheet that we did provide, has a little more detail. Tried to fill in the status on a column all the way over to the right, which kind of gives you a brief summary of why these cases have gotten held up in land court for as long as they have. Oftentimes, it's a probate issue, an air issue. Some, you know, some properties have 92 heirs. And we haven't had... Probably still don't have the resources to fully vet and track down 92 heirs. We're exploring different software that is available through West Lawn, LexisNexis, that might provide an opportunity for us to maybe go about this process a little bit quicker. That can allow us to go through that many heirs. But for now, there are a lot of hurdles with the cases that are currently in... That are currently at the land court. And the cases that have been filed this year were a lot more familiar and comfortable with those cases, and we're able to follow those a lot more closely. So, you know, it shouldn't... They won't be left to sort of die in the land court. We're gonna... We're gonna stay on top of those, and it'll be easier for us to maintain them, stay on top of them moving forward. And then just one last thing I wanted to add. The city also has been working... The Law Department has been working closely with DPD. And once the city takes title, or immediately, we get in touch with DPD, and then they have an internal process for determining, you know, is this lot buildable, not buildable, should go through the yard sale program, should it go off RFP? We send it over to them, and then they start the process right away. So we've sort of developed an internal system here that streamlines the process.
Right.
And I just, very quickly, before I stop talking, not only do I want to thank Attorney McKenna and Attorney French, but Stephanie Hunter, the Tax Title Paralegal, has done incredible job. She's picked up on this quicker than just about anyone I've seen, and she's really helped sort of streamline this process for us. So we're in a really good position right now, moving forward.
Thank you for the brief update. I am... Before I mention... Before I have a question, I had conversation with Counselor Mercier, that the city of Loews used to have this practice similar to what happened in Minnesota, and what happened in Worcester, what happened in Springfield, that the city took property by tax title, and the city of Loews tried to get the money quickly, sell it to a company called Talaj. And in the situation in Worcester, there's a woman who owned a two-family, and she fell behind because of the pandemic she's... And this... She owed about $2,000 with the penalties and the interest. It's about $3,000 and plus. So this company, Talaj, that the city of Loews used to do business with, foreclosed on the property, and then they ready to sell her home, which is probably $400,000. And the law of Massachusetts allowed the company like that to just auction off and sell the home and keep the profit. So, and Counselor Mercier say, gee, I didn't know. And this is... And then she was like surprised to hear that, so... And then this is not right. You know, like similar situation like City Counselor Mercier, she's, you know, fallen to hard time. And that's why my concern is this... I'm in real estate business, so my concern is that I look at all the property that's delinquents, and I look at it and divide it into three categories. One is commercial properties that are behind. One of them is owed the city of Loews like a million dollars. This is a sil... Silorazim medical on Tanner Street. And they are companies, so we should be able to collect. And the second portion of this tax title are lands. One of them, it's near where Counselor Rita Mercier on Summer Street, a gentleman I know, he bought a piece of land, it's still there, and now it's under the tax title, and I don't think he's going to claim it. And lastly, is a group of individual homeowners, and you list 128 of them owe $1,000 less. I want to commend you for really implementing new step to kind of collect that, and you reach out to them and stuff like that. And maybe we should also, you know, having someone from our Law Department, I understand it might take time, to follow up with phone calls to individual who owe less than $1,000. In addition to what you have just described of step that you take, maybe follow up with the phone call after mailing out to the homeowners who owe less than $1,000, and try to see what happened and what the reason they're behind on it, you know, things like that. The other question I have would be, you mentioned that, you know, for the interest which can accrue up really a lot if you're behind a year or two. And you mentioned that the city would waive up to 50%, so the penalties and interest charges, which is a good thing to help those who are really falling hard times try to catch up with what they owe. I'm sure they're not owing only the taxes, they owe on other, you know, credit cards and other bills as well. So if we could work with the homeowner in a situation like that, because it's going to be a win-win situation for both the cities and the homeowner, to allow them to stay in their own home home. So that's just my comments, and I would turn to my colleagues if they have any questions regarding this issue. So thank you. Thank you for all you do. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Solicitor, and your office for putting together this report. I noticed a lot of work, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of properties for us to consider, and it hasn't always been the focus before. So your team's been trying to do the catch-up work and try to get ahead of the issue as well. Counselor Gitcher and Mr. Chairman brought out some good points already. I just want to look at one of the last statement in your report about the environmental issues. I think two, three comments that would follow up on that. I see that you mentioned that there are four serious environmental issues. And when you put the word "serious," are they different level of seriousness? Because to my understanding, a property, a land that has environmental issues will have trouble with transference in general anyway, you know, they have to deal with the EPA and so forth. So my question is, the different level of environment issues, and if a property, you know, if it was a tax taking, it's a private property before the city takes it, who is responsible for the cost, the burden of the environmental cleanup, because different areas of environmental issues? You know, but if it's a city-owned, like for example, it's a lot stopped being used, and a batter would like to buy that property, and there be found some kind of environmental issues, is the city responsible for cleaning, or quote-unquote cleaning at first before transfer into the new owner? Or is it going to be the new owner's going to have to take care of that? So I guess to summarize it, you know, how does the city deal with properties with environmental issues? Who bears the burden of the cost and so forth?
Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, thank you. So to your point, and I think you were sort of alluding to it, if there are properties that are contaminated, you know, it's on the person who owned it before it gets transferred. I mean, that's, you know, there could be issues of disclosure, but generally speaking, you know, Counselor Yem brought up 86 Tanner Street, and I mean, this is a... It's a super fund site that's, you know, the federal government, state government, they're... They are in control of that property. So it's a little, I don't want to say misleading, that it's still on here, but it is. But again, that is property that will never be used for anything else for a very, very, very long time. And that is, for a few of them, you can see the same chemical corporations listed there. It's going to be the same scenario for all of them. And no one is going to want to transfer that property to someone else in the condition that it's in it, which has never happened.
Thank you for answering so far. Let's look at a smaller scale, like a smaller property. If there was an empty lot owned by the city, and a batter resident want to purchase that, and there's some environmental issue with that, quote-unquote, could be light or so forth, what is the process of... Is that the city responsible for cleaning up first, or...
Anytime there's an environmental issue, anybody who takes any type of ownership in the property is responsible for it. So the city's not going to foreclose any property that has any contamination on it, because once you get involved in it, it says that you get involved in it as long as you don't exasperate the contamination. But what could that mean? That could mean you go and you dig something up and expose to something. So you're very... You know, you assume responsibility if you take ownership of any property that has contamination. So with the Silorazim site, that was one of the first super fund sites. It was a chemical company on Tanner Street that the federal government came in, and they're still monitoring it. There's not much that we can do over there. And as Solicitor said, it's, you know, the assessment of that is something that we may want to look at with the Department of Revenue, see why that's still being assessed, and when it has no value and we can't collect it. With regards to when we have a property that we have, you know, we're looking to take a title to it, or a tax taking, or any proceeding in land court, the paralegal will contact Sarah Brown over in DPD, who is our environmental technician over there, and she works with contaminated sites, environmental issues, and she lets us know if there's any known sites that is on a known contamination list, so we know before we even start. And that's the process that we use. We work with the other departments, being Sarah Brown, DPD, who has a list of properties with known contaminants on it. So that's how we make sure that we don't foreclose on a property, or try not to foreclose a property that has contamination. The engineers may have a list of sites. In the past, we used those, hazardous waste, known oil tanks that have leaked, or things in gas stations, things like that that has happened. So there's some list of properties that we have, but this is an urban renewal site. Pretty much any property that we have here will have some type of known contaminants on it, so it's very difficult.
Okay. I thank you for the answer. You know, I'm not hoping for a higher number, but, you know, when I see only four properties with serious environment issues, I'm glad it's only four, not more than that, but it's hard to imagine that, you know, talk about different levels of seriousness earlier. I'm also surprised that there are not more properties with environment issues, so to I guess, you know, as the Assistant Solicitor mentioned, so there's somebody checking on that before they take off any property, make sure that, I guess, I'm getting to a true, like the... It's rather expensive to clean up any property. As Mr. McKenna mentioned, we're expensive to clean up any property with environmental issues. So I don't want the burden to come on to the city wants to see take it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I notice that the city has a plan according to what you gave us to really take care of the back taxes. And here's... In addition to what the Supreme Court and then the Court of Massachusetts have ruled, the Attorney General's Office also issues a guideline for taking the tax title. And I look at it, it's a really good... It's a good guideline to follow. So if you don't have a chance to look at it, look at the Attorney General's guideline for the tax title taking. In addition to that, I know legislation have to change the laws and stuff, but in the meantime, if we take a property by tax title and auction it off, and then without violating what the Supreme Court rules, saying that if the person owed $5,000 and the home is sold for $400,000, can we reimburse the homeowner the difference? Would that, you know, would be satisfy the court? And that would be my question, you know, without having to leave all these properties, you know, hanging.
Thank you. So your point is exactly correct. The issue that came up in Minnesota and out in Western Mass is it has to do with the equity in the home, not to do with the amount that they owe in taxes. So in that scenario, if a property were taken by tax title, the city would take what is owed to them via the taxes, and the city would not keep the equity. That would be in line with the case law that we've seen so far, and I suspect moving forward, that would be in line with whatever other legislation was passed.
Well, that would be the last resort for me. Thank you for that explanation. To me, it's that would be the last resort, simply because, you know, the city of Loews is behind on the housing unit. That's right now, three or 400 unit behind on the population. So it's not an ideal to kick someone out of their home and then, you know, and auction it off. The ideal is like you start off explaining to us that, you know, you do deploy certain measure right now to try to collect as much as possible, start with the account that is thousands or less, you know, work your way up that way. So this way, we can also satisfy what they owe us, the city, and then also allow the homeowner continue to live in their homes, and then also the payment that you're talking about, which is really good, the forgiveness of 50% of the interest on the delinquents' taxes, that also helpful. How much is the interest charges on, say, I owe the city $2,000 and I don't have a means to pay it? What the interest on that that normally be charged?
So with the tax title, it's 16%. 16, 1-6. And then 14 before it goes into tax title.
Is that across all communities? It's a basic for everybody? It's not something Loews said, "We're going to take 16%"? So it's across the board throughout Massachusetts, right?
Right. Yeah, that's statutory.
Which makes a lot of sense. If you think about it, it cost us to put you in the seat to go get somebody who's delinquent, who offsets a budget every year for us. So it's taking a resource where we could provide a service to somebody else away from us. So I would agree with that, and I agree with every speaker here, that we shouldn't take more than is owed at the same time. But there is a cost to having you do this, and I think the $50,000 that went in upfront to get $550,000 back makes a lot of sense. You know, there's a back pay here. So, I mean, that investment was huge for us. Are these... All these accounts the same owners? Or has it been transferred to family members, so it's within the same family? Because last time we talked about this, I pointed to the wrong agency, because it was listed in here as an agency. So I'm like, well, how can this agency owe us this money? And so is it... Or are they all the same?
The name on the list is the name of the owner is the original tax taking. So if you see like one of these older ones from 1977, you know, Silorazim, they still the owner may have been taken over by the US government. Or if you see one from 1970, it'd be the heirs like Ignacio. It's the name at the original taking is on the list. So if you see like one of the top ones here, they have the heirs of Teresa Langlois. There could be her heirs that are owned it, or somebody, but the original taking, the owner is the original taking that we did at that time.
So how can it be transferred if someone owes anything? Or can it be?
They take it subject to the taxes. They can transfer it, and they would buy it subject to the taxes, subject to any liens on the property, they can transfer it.
So the person accepts all the liens with it? And they're responsible for it?
That's correct. They buy it subject to, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, so then we still have the proper people to go after, because they accepted it. So then there's legalities there when they accept. One of my major questions is, can we put an ordinance in place that can speed up the process? And what would trigger you to actually take this process versus just write a letter to somebody? You know, what's that... Is there a threshold amount? Or is there something... Because like you said, there's this many that are only $1,000 in theirs. Is there a threshold that you guys would like to see? And is there something that we can strengthen the ordinance with?
Hi, good evening. So first, I do want to touch base on, for the short title detail report, it just pulls the first line of the owner. So for some of these, they will list, you know, one name, but there's a co-owner on the property. On the long title detail report, they do list the assessed owner as well as the current owner, and I'm happy to provide that to you guys. But when we do pull the short title detail report, it just pulls that one line. So I know the ones where they were saying, "Loews Housing Authority," we do have the current owner, and that's who we reach out to on these matters. But for the purpose of pulling that report from UNICEF, it just has that one line. If that answers that part of the question.
So is there something that we can strengthen an ordinance with that would trigger your department to do something, Attorney Williams, that could give you a stronger base? Or is it something that you guys just have a policy in place that, okay, here it is, this makes sense, we're going to go do this? Because it seems like there's a thousand... How do we prevent those $1,000 ones to get up to $20,000? Is there a trigger that we could get to the next level that could stop it?
So those are the ones that we do want to address in sending those letters. They are going to be receiving a particular notice for those. We did start attacking in waves of the more recent ones that have higher balances and going from there, with the idea that they're more recent, we're more likely to collect on those. And we have been getting great contact on sending those letters. When it comes to the $1,000 or less, I know that for some of those, it ends up where they make a payment, but it's not in full. So that's something that, you know, can be addressed. I do know that when it's the taking process, we don't typically file instrument of takings on properties that owe less than $1,000. We do set a threshold when we are... We do set a threshold when we are doing the instrument of taking process, so, you know, we're not taking someone for $50. So we do work, I work with the Treasurer's Office and going over that.
So is the city notified when there's a transfer of such liens that are on the property, or tax title, or whatever we're talking about? Would the city be notified? I have a tax title against me, and I'm going to transfer to Counselor Yem. He's going to take on my debt. Is the city notified at that point? Because the city may say, wait a minute, you know, I have a stake in this, and I want this before the transfer. Is there a way of doing that?
So the city gets notification, so the assessors gets notification when a deed is recorded with the Registry of Deeds. So we're aware of when there is a transfer in ownership. But I don't know, so in terms of, you know, the city used to assign tax liens, I'm not sure that we get notification if individuals are doing that. They would have to record documentation with the Registry of Deeds, but it's the city that holds the tax title, so we would have to be the one to assign it to a third party, which we are currently not doing.
Do you think a state law should be put in place that says when something gets transferred and there's funds owed to a government agency, such as the city, that they should be notified before transfers can happen? Or is that something that you guys say that is not, something that could be legally done? It makes a lot of sense. I have a stake in this. You're transferring it to someone just to get out of it. This person can claim bankruptcy and walk away from, like, serizm. There's no point to paying the city any money, because at the end of the day, they know the land is contaminated, you can't do anything with it, so I'm just going to sit here and not pay you. And that's really what happened for years, and then Mr. McKenna can allude to that, because he was here when it was all going on. I just think the state needs to step in and say, okay, something is owed at closing, whether it's a water bill, whether, you know, you can't transfer over water bills, but we can transfer over tax liens. It makes, you know, money owed on the tax side, but we can't do it on the water side, because we would shut you off in a minute before we would do that. So somebody can't take off on your water debt, why couldn't we do the same with this type of property taxes?
So I will say that some of these are because when there is a transfer of property, there's confusion on who is responsible for the remaining taxes of that fiscal year. So with that, the taxes being assessed as the owner of January 1, if you were to sell between January 2 and June 30, there is a gap, because we still have to send the bills to the assessed owner. I will say that when we are sending notices, we began to send it to not only just the assessed owner, but also the current owner, so that both parties are notified, and that way they can work on solving that.
It just seems to me the water and sewer side has got their stuff much more together than the tax side in government. It seems like water and sewer, it doesn't matter. At closing, this is paid, here's your number, someone accepts a couple days one way or another way, but it seems like the tax side is more complicated to this piece than...
When the water doesn't, isn't paid, it gets put on a special assessment, then we're forced to collect it. We collect that. So the uncollected water and sewer gets collected by the Tax Title Department. The taxes that aren't collected, and the original bills that go out, get collected by the Tax Title Division. Any special assessment gets added on, and we collect it. So we collect everything that's not paid.
Water and sewer has to be paid before closing, right?
Water and sewer, you get a final water bill.
Right.
And you get a municipal lien certificate at the closing to show what liens are on there, and you record it, if it's done right.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering on the tax side.
You could sell, you could buy a property from Counselor Yem, and you could give him money, he could give you a deed to the property without, you know, an attorney, or an MLC, or a final watering, and you buy it subject to whatever's on there. It doesn't always go that way, but that's, the procedures are in place to collect the taxes. The Treasurer sends out the notices each quarter, they go out. When it comes to the assessed owner, the assessors do it as of January 1 for the next fiscal year. When somebody buys a property, we buy a property, you know you owe taxes to that property from the day that you buy it. So the confusion there is on who's paying it, whether it's the mortgage company or an escrow company. And that's when we send notifications, and like Counselor said, pick up the phone and call them, say, there's an issue here, they paid the fiscal 2025, but not the fourth quarter, fiscal '24. You can see that's a problem, and the paralegal will pick up on that, neither call them or notify them. That's how we've always done it. We try to notify everybody prior to going in the newspaper. We don't embarrass anybody. We send them out notices saying there's impending advertisement, that you're going to go into tax title because you haven't paid your real estate bill. We notify them of that down in the Treasurer's Office prior to doing the tax taking. Once there is a tax taking, we notify them that we're going to put them in land court. Once they're in land court, you have due process rights, it's constitutional rights to strict due process, because you're taking a property. So there isn't any special statutory authority that'll speed it up. You have to follow due process of the Constitution, and that's what we're doing, and that's where the notification issues come in. It's difficult, but it's a process that we're trying to manage and, you know, have a plan to do it. When they sold off the tax titles, it got instant revenue came in, but you put it in somebody else's hands to collect your taxes, and that's where some of the problems came out. It wasn't illegal, but it's, you know, it's, they were within the law, but it just wasn't moral. So that's why, you know, Supreme Court stepped in.
So what you're telling me is this is the best way, and there's no other way of doing anything to change it? Because quite frankly, if this was the best way, then a few weeks back, I wouldn't have blamed one agency, whose name is still on this, and embarrassed them when it's three years old and it should be cleaned up, or it should have been on to the new person. And that's the part that kind of sits back, and you say, okay, so is this truly the setting for it? But I'll defer to Counselor Mercier. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Please know that I'm not criticizing anybody. I know how difficult your job is. I know how frustrating it is. I know that you've got to follow due process, so it's not completely up to you. You've got to follow the rules and the path and everything. You have to go to land court, and that's what seems to be my problem. This is a lot of property that could be utilized and let people have a beautiful home. It could be in neighborhoods where an eyesore is cleaned up and made viable again, and bring the value up of the surrounding neighbors. This is what's frustrating to me. For example, and I'm not blaming anybody here, this is property at 36 Royal Street. I lived there, across the street. I remember the night they had a fire, and the lady burned to death. My husband had to go and identify the body. That was 31 years ago, and it's still in land court? It needs probate. What does that mean? Need, needs, need probate of the owner? What does that mean? It's the second page.
When you have an owner that's listed as the owner of the property, and they have died, you need to probate their estate if they have one. If they don't have an estate, you need to determine their heirs from obituaries or any other source to try to track down their heirs. If those people have then died, you need to find their probates, and it just goes on. So it can get difficult. You know, 31 years, certainly there's some type of issue that's gone across, that it was tough to collect back then, 31 years ago. We certainly have a couple attorneys here that we're going to try to find these older cases and work on it, but it's research that needs to be done for one account out of 500.
Well, there's one person that would be involved in this, and that's the nephew, and his name is Michael, and he moved to Maine when this episode happened. He hasn't been heard of since. He was a friend of my son's. I never heard from him again, and even if I did, I don't think he'd want to pay $148,000 back taxes or whatever. So I don't know what you'd do with that. I think the lot is probably an unbuildable lot, but it could be offered as a yard sale half to each property on, that abuts it, and at least it would be on the tax roll. At least it would be generating use and money for the city. See, again, I'm not trying to blame anybody, but it's frustrating to me. It's also frustrating when you look at 318 Andover Street, and you're coming down the gateway of a city, and you see property that could be so beautiful, but there's the growth. And every now and then, I call the city, they send DPW down to cut the grass, cut the grass, do this, do that, make it look decent. And that bill is just piling up, piling up. It's just frustrating to me. That's what I'm trying to say. Now, there is another group that's overlooked, and I'm going to tell you another group. It doesn't happen that often, thank God, but picture it. An elderly couple, they own a home together. They barely make ends meet, because when they did work, they never made much money, so they're on social security and they don't make much money. Now the husband dies, the woman can't go on with the bills and all this, all by herself. Who knows where the family is, probably in California or something. She's not asking for help from the family, or probably she don't have a family. Next thing you know, she's out on the street, she's homeless. She owns, owes about $3,000. That, to me, is a shame. That's a shame. These are the people I want to save, because through no fault of their own, they're homeless because of the death of a loved one, and they're all alone now. So there's different stories to different properties. It's just so sad to see property and money that we could generate. I don't know who's going to come back and pay off $148,000, but I don't think it's fair that, let's say we clear this one, land court clears this particular, one particular property where there's a house there, and then they sell it off to a company, and the company resells it and gets a fortune, and then the person that owned it never gets anything from it. That's a shame. So there's very much unfairness going on through no fault of your own, but you sense the frustration. I feel, I'm sure if I worked on it, I'd be frustrated too. So I know you're doing the best you can, and it's just very difficult. I, I'm just saying that, I don't know where to begin. I don't know. I'd like to know if land court, is there something that's holding you up, more or less like land court? How can you get a probate, the, who owns what, when everybody's gone now, or everybody's dead? And a lot of times, I'd talk to the neighbors and say, did you live here at such and such a time? Do you know who the owners were at that time? Like, for example, I know the story of Annabelle Hogan. I know she died 60 years ago, and her niece came in and took over the property, and there was a fire there, and she burned to death. Her son went to Maine. I don't think you'll ever find the son. So here's property 31 years later, that's not doing any good for anybody. But anyway, that's my rant. I'm sorry to...
No need to apologize, Counselor Mercier. I will say for 318 Andover Street, we did file a complaint in December with the land court. Upon our search with the land court, they asked a checklist, so we were looking over probate matters, and the homeowner did pass away unfortunately in October. However, his family does have an active petition in the Middlesex Probate and Family Court. So I have been monitoring that, so we're just waiting to see who receives title to that property, so we can be in touch with them. And work to figure out whether they're selling the property, or what's going on, because I know it has been an eyesore for that area. Also, when it comes to the elderly homeowners, we do try to assist with them. You know, we try to work around a flexible payment agreement, given the circumstances. A lot of people are on, you know, a set monthly income, so we do try to assist and, you know, set up an agreement that they're not going to default on. We also do talk to them about, through the Assessor's Office, the elderly senior exemptions, and providing them the paperwork to get that started, so that way at least there's some relief if they qualify for those exemptions to make their taxes lower, and to assist that way.
That's why I still work. I need to have a roof over my head. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can come live with me.
Thank you.
You can come live with me.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Mercier. Anything else from my colleagues? Anything else? What I'd like to do is, so far, you know, you, the Law Department have done a really good job in collecting what's owed, a portion of it, and I would like to continue the subcommittee meeting to maybe a month later, things like that, so that we can hear the progress of what you have done. Okay. Counselor Gitcher.
Through you to City Solicitor Williams. Over the last six months, I see over at least since January, we have 502 accounts now. What would you have said that the accounts were at in the start of January, and how much have we actually dropped down?
So as of January 3, there were 623 accounts in tax title. I can get you the exact number of what was owed as of then, but I do know that there were 623 accounts as of January 3.
So that looks like you dropped down about 20%.
Correct.
So that's pretty good in the timeframe, so if that happens again in the next four months, then we're doing well. I mean, I agree with everything you guys have said. We're just trying to look and see, is there a tool that we can make an ordinance out of, or something like that, that can even give you further bite to it? But it seems like if you went down 20% in that period of time, that you guys are doing it right. So you went and collected $550,000 in a five-month period, and the fifth month isn't even close to closed yet. So I would applaud you guys for what you're doing. We're just here trying to say, okay, is this something that's productive for us meeting, and can we give you another tool that can be put in your toolbox that says, all right, we're done with this, we need to move on? That was my premise of the questions to all of you, is if there's something that we can do to help, it helps the regular resident too, because it will offset the tax base, and then we can actually use the monies upfront. So we thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you, Counselor Gitcher. Anything you want to let us know before we continue this meeting to the next month? Before we continue, I'd like to recognize Counselor Kim Scott is here, and the Director of Health Department, Lisa Golden, is here in the chamber as well.
Yes. Thank you. Just very quickly, before we leave, we really do feel confident in the system that we have in place, and the people who are working. We're all rowing in the same direction. We have a really good handle of what we need to do and how we're going to get there. So I know I speak for everyone, we're very confident in the direction that we're moving in. So we appreciate all your support, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah. Thank you. And that's to echo Counselor Gitcher's mention, is that we here want to provide you with enough support and tools, so that we can proceed effectively in collecting these taxes. The motion was ask, what are we going to do with the properties once we take over? You know, things like that. So that's still the issue that we need to deal with, the legal issues that has nothing to do with us. We kind of tie, our hands are tied. So if the city and Law Department continue to work, not just collecting it, but work with our state delegations, the Attorney General's Office, and try to move to see if the law can be changed, so that we can proceed with the collecting of taxes. So I just want to thank you on behalf of the committee for being here. If I may also request, as Counselor Gitcher noted in early beginning of the meeting, if you have materials, you want to give it to us, if you can give us 24 hours, so we have a chance to kind of look over, look through, and so we come prepared, and we need to have any question, we can ask you to explain to us. So just allow us 24 hours, you know. I didn't know about the email, but until Counselor Gitcher told me that. So I appreciate for what you do, you know, good job, and congratulations, and keep up the good work. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. You want to continue or not adjourn?
No. Oh, motion to continue. Yes, sorry. Yeah, motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's, thank you.